Stands that we use over there for.
For the tablets?
Yeah.
I don't know off of hand where they would be if they were anywhere, they'd be downstairs. And I can go get one. I'm sorry.
Testing.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Just wave your hand, nod your head. Perfect thumbs up. So thanks. You're all muted when you come in to the meeting. So if you need to unmute yourself, do so before speaking. I try to maintain a muted status for all of you. So that background noise and stuff. Most of you are pretty good about muting, but I do that just in case. So Mayor, it is 7:00 PM. Take it away if you will.
I will. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yukaya, would you do the roll call of the council, please? Okay, I'm not hearing anyone. So Yukaya, would you do the roll call of the council, please? Or Paul, would you like to do that?
Either way, it works. I can do it.
Paul, it's yours.
Okay, Councilor Reynolds?
Here.
Councilor Rios?
Here.
Councilor Henson?
Doug?
Doug?
You're muted.
You're muted, but I think he said here.
Okay.
Okay, Councilor Sandusky?
Here.
Councilor Burris?
Here.
Councilor Hopkins is not available. And Mayor Weber?
Councilor Hopkins reached me earlier and she has a presentation she has to do for a class she's in. And so she's not able to be here with us this evening. Okay, our first item on the agenda is the minutes of May 4.
I move, we approve the minutes of May 4.
It was moved in second that we, oh, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second that we approved the minutes of May 4. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we have two items that need to be added to the agenda tonight. One is the vote on the inclusion of, of a vote on Resolution 1816. And the second is on proclamation. So I will entertain a motion from one of the, one of you to add those two items to the agenda before we begin.
I'll move that we add both of those to tonight's agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we add two additional items to the agenda. One is the vote on the inclusion of Resolution number 1816, and the second one is on a proclamation. Now, we should put the inclusion of the resolution under new business. And we should do the proclamation before we do our presentations.
Can we vote on it?
And I'm getting there. Just so you know where they're going to go. Okay, you understand, we'll do the proclamation first and then we'll put the resolution at the end of new business. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's look at the proclamation first. You know, our, our seniors this year are, have an unusual challenge. And that is that they are not going to have all of the pomp and circumstance that has been associated with graduation in the past. And so the proclamation is to recognize the value and to celebrate the achievements of our Tillamook High School graduating class of 2020. Whereas the Tillamook High School graduating class of the year 2020 has experienced the dramatic interruption of their educational and social lives due to novel corona virus health emergency. And whereas the graduating seniors in the Tillamook High School class of 2020 deserve their achievements to be recognized by people within their communities and beyond. And whereas this year's graduating class contains students who have achieved to their utmost in academics, agriculture, athletics, business, engineering, theater, and music programs and more. And whereas the government of the city of Tillamook is exceedingly glad to acknowledge and support the future success of the 2020 graduating class of Tillamook High School. Let it be hereby proclaimed. I Suzanne Weber, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tillamook, do encourage the people of Tillamook to greatly honor the Tillamook High School graduating class of 2020. I acknowledge that this class of students has excelled despite the enormous challenges set before them. They are thereby worthy of great commendation from their family, their friends, and their community. And on behalf of the city of Tillamook, we wish them the absolute best in all of their future efforts. I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Tillamook to be affixed on this 18th day of May, 2020. Okay. Next, we have a presentation, Farmer's Market and a June Dairy Parade. Justin, are you there?
I am there. So just here to give a little bit of update on these two programs that the chamber manages, just really through all the ever-changing regulations and event closures and everything throughout this COVID-19 series we're in. So starting with the Farmer's Market, I just want to reiterate to everybody there on the council and listening that the Farmer's Market is in fact going to be starting on June 13. You might remember we were originally going to push that date back to Memorial Day weekend for a start date. But with everything going on, we decided, let's push it back to the original start date of June 13. However, we are going to have the Farmer's Market. The Farmer's Market falls under kind of the guidelines of a shopping center more than does an event. The Oregon Farmers Market Association has been keeping Sadie, our market manager comprised of what laws are applicable, which is changing every day, especially today. So we'll see how that, how that all plays out. So really, we are carrying forward. They'll look a little different this year. Currently, as of Friday, we were, were counting how many people were allowed to have in the market. No live music to start, no children's games to start, really more of a vending shopping experience to start the season. And as the season progresses, hopefully, we can ease up on that. So that is the Farmer's Market. We're looking forward to it. Sadie's excited. We have some, a pretty good number of vendors already signed up, ready to roll. So then moving on to June Dairy Parade, this has been, I feel like, the question of the week last week. As the fair announced that that was going to be changed significantly. We have had some meetings here at the chamber. We, I talked to Terry Wright a little bit ago, spoke with Mayor Weber briefly, just on the concept. We are looking to continue the June Dairy Parade. That is going to be the same date, June 27. However, it also will look very different. It'll look a lot like what you just got done talking about with the high school graduation style where we will be leading a processional through town, starting at the fairgrounds, going down 12th Street, 11th to Stillwell, down 3rd. The idea here is, is that we will stage all of the entries at various locations in areas where they have, where they can meet the distancing requirements and will not exceed 25 people within their group. The idea is that we're not looking to break a law, we're just looking to exercise all the opportunities we have within it. So dance groups will be no longer, nobody in 25, marching groups, nobody in 25. And we'll ensure that they have adequate space to distance their whole group. The idea here is, is that we will have the spectators, the cars, meet at the fairgrounds. And we will lead 20 to 50 car processionals through town. That way, we can break it up. So it's not just one long traffic jam. Trying to think, we will still have, we're looking to have still the swag and the candy to hand out. Just maybe it will require masks and potentially having some fun, maybe throwing it in people's cars if they're willing to, to keep that distancing. But the idea here is, is we're aiming for fun. We're aiming to be safe, but have fun. You know, the June Dairy Parade's been a part of the community for, this is the 63rd year. So we don't want it to rain on our parade. So that's a full pun intended, but I'm here to answer any questions. It's a pretty brief report. I just think that you guys, I'd love your feedback. If there's any concerns that we need to address prior to moving forward, we won't need street closures or ODOT permits or anything like that as we're leading a processional rather than a parade. Yeah, for questions?
Do you have a map of where all your various dance and marching groups will be?
Not even close yet. We just talked about this on Friday. The idea is, is we'll be reaching out to both the, the schools. Joanna Stelzick's actually on here from PUD. We're looking at PUD, potentially Napa, YMCA has agreed, Liberty School. If we can run, we'll, we'll park some of the trucks alongside the road even for people to, to kind of gather. It's, you know, you could think of it almost like Christmas lights. We're gonna, we're gonna guide you through and you're gonna ooh and ah. So we don't have that all set. We have a lot of logistics to work out. There's a lot of things about this that make it easier. There's also a lot of things about this that make it more difficult. So we will get there. But other than that, don't have anything yet.
Justin?
How many entries do you have at this time in the parade?
I think we have close to 40. And, and a lot of, I will say, a lot of those, as soon as this goes out after this meeting tomorrow, I, I know that there's probably about a dozen, you know, at least a dozen that have their applications. They've just been waiting to hear what we're doing.
Okay, Brian, you had a question?
I did. In light of the court action today, if the state Supreme Court upholds, are you looking to continue with this regardless?
That depends on how fast they get a hold back, I guess. I would say that's a hard, that's a tough one. If, if we were, if the Supreme Court was to come back in the next couple of days, we might be, this week, we might be able to retool and go back. If it comes out in a couple of weeks, we'll probably have to stay the course. So I don't really have a direct answer for that. It's all dependent on timing.
Are there any other questions? Aaron, I can't see you, so I don't know if you have a question?
I do not.
Okay.
All right. So I, real quick, are you using any city parks? Are you going to be changing any traffic patterns?
We will be changing no traffic patterns. We are going to use the, the directional, the direction of the current traffic. City parks wise, we hadn't, I hadn't really got that far. The only one we would potentially have people staged at would be Goodspeed. And by the time we get down 12th and around to Goodspeed Park, I don't know if we're going to need that much space. So at this time, we don't intend on changing any traffic or utilizing city property.
Staff has not reviewed any of this, so I'm assuming that you are not asking city staff to do anything.
And Public Works, as far as I know, Terry, Chief Wright, I did talk with this morning. He was a little occupied today, so we are going to meet tomorrow morning to discuss kind of what it might entail to have city police involved in processionals or not necessarily shutting down a traffic intersection, but helping hold traffic while the 20 or 50 cars go. I am talking with Chief Wright tomorrow. So like I said, this is all moving really fast and I wish I had more concrete stuff to give you.
It's a really interesting concept. Good for you for thinking of that.
Just want to make the community have fun.
Are you looking for any kind of approval from the city tonight or at the next meeting or what?
I mean, I don't think that, it's like, kind of like the globally prayer last week. I mean, we're just here kind of letting you know what's going on. You know, breaking the processional up, we don't foresee it causing a huge, you know, we're not going to have 500 cars in one line where nobody can get through or around. And so I don't feel like there's anything we have that is going to need approval. I also just wanted to make sure you guys were the first to know. We, besides my board members, to move forward so that I could get into your guys' concerns, talk with Chief Wright, get into his concerns to make sure that we don't blindside everybody. So.
Thank you, Justin. Any other comments from counselors concerning this? Okay, do, are, are you complete? Is your report complete, Justin?
Yeah, unless there's questions on the Farmer's Market, those are really just the two things that I wanted to give an update on. I guess I could talk, you know, just a couple of things real quick. You know, with this, with the businesses and COVID, things are changing very fast. We're trying to get information as soon as possible. We do have signage from Visit Tillamook Coast. We also have cloth face coverings here at the chamber for anybody, any businesses that you know might need those to open. Again, changing today, but it might be different tomorrow. We also have more cloth face coverings coming tomorrow. So those were donated by local groups that selling them. So if you do know anybody that's a business that needs some of those for their staff or would like to offer them to their customers, we are, those are available here from nine to noon right now, Monday through Friday. I hope everybody got an opportunity to see our We're Still in Business video that we released a couple of days after your, after the last council meeting. Thank you.
Standing.
Thank you. That was, that was really entailed to, to get people to think about shopping differently. We've got great feedback on it and I think it was a good representation of where we're at today in the community. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And like I said, that, oh, you might want to say that your Mornings on Main is beginning tomorrow morning also. I was going to put that in my mayor's report, but it would be better coming from you, Justin.
Sure. So tomorrow morning, we have asked that people RSVP so that we can accommodate Friday's rules of under 25. As of this point, I guess who shows up, who shows up and we'll hang out. But Mornings on Main Street is back up and going. That Mornings on Main Street is the third Tuesday of every month. And I think we missed one month through this whole thing, so I feel like we did pretty good. It's just the social networking for community members and business owners to kind of hear what's going on, share what they have going on. Sarasota's is up and running for some treats, so you can get in here and get one of those, free coffee, water, tea. Show up, drop in five minutes, preload if you want and leave, or come and hang out. So whatever you want to do. So we're excited to have that back up and going.
Thank you. Because that's a really good program that you have too, that brings the businesses together. So I appreciate that. Okay, if that completes your report, we'll go on to the City Sanitary Service Annual Rate Review and Report. And Bobby's here. And he's not alone, I know.
Hello.
Ron's here too.
Just wanted to come with you guys with our annual report and rate review. The cover letter talks about what we did in the last year. And then there's an example of a customer notice letter. And then our financials, the only part of our rates that we're asking to increase for the next year are the curbside commingled recycling rate. And that's because we saw our dump fee for that particular product double in the last year from $60 to $120 a ton. So we need to make sure we can cover our expenses with that program. So it's sustainable. And then most circumstances, we probably would have asked for around a 3% rate increase overall. But we decided in light of everything that's going on and likely my predictions financially will be off due to everything that's happening, that we held off any rate adjustments until next year at least. So that's basically what we got going on. And we haven't really noticed a giant decrease in business from our standpoint. We've obviously, we're obviously considered essential services. So we've been running at normal capacity since all this started. And we, I mean, with the exception of schools and like other major commercial accounts, either lower service amounts are completely stopping. We've been able to keep all our customer base going pretty well so far. So I'll just open it up for any questions and concerns that you might have. And hopefully look for a recommendation to allow for us to have the rate increase.
Counselors, do you have questions? Aaron, I can't see you. Do you have a question?
He didn't.
I, I do not. No, I think it's pretty commendable, keeping the rates where they are. I just have to say that.
The other thing I want to say is that I really appreciate the recycling service with, you know, for paper and, and boxes and cardboard and things like that. I, I think that's great. Thank you.
I also wanted to, you're welcome. And I also wanted to note that the, one of the reasons why we were able to keep our rates steady is the county put off any rate increases for tipping fees at the transfer station. So that's also a major factor in us being able to keep rates steady. I realize that's the county's purview, not the city's, but they decided to not raise any rates either. So that allowed us to keep our rates steady.
Thank you. Okay, hearing nothing from the counselors. We're happy with you, Bobby. We're happy with you, Ron. We appreciate you. And you're on the, the first item under new business for the consideration of the rates. Okay?
Okay, sounds good. That's all the questions. I'm happy to answer anything.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go into new business then. And our first item is the City Sanitary Service Rate Increase Request.
Okay. You have to approve any request like this. So you're looking at a $4 per month recycling service.
$2 per month, yes? Increase. Okay, if you have no questions, I will entertain a motion concerning this. John, you have a question?
Oh, I was going to make a motion.
I'd love to have you make a motion.
Okay. I move that we approve City Sanitary Services proposal of the raise in fees for curbside commingled recycling and the rest of the report.
Thank you. Jorge, you second that? Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
Question.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously by the council. Seated. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have two OLCC recommendations for permits. And one of them is from Smokin' Steve's. And the other one is from the Rodeo Steakhouse. And I believe you have some information. Can you tell me, Paul, if, how, how this was received by the police chief, if there, if this was recommended by the police chief?
I haven't had communication with him on this. Yukaya, did you speak with him?
I haven't spoken directly with Terry. If the council will know, I did just send out via email redacted copies of both, both reports. They were approved for recommendation by the Oregon State Patrol. However, I have not received word directly from Chief Wright.
Okay, let's address.
Aaron, Aaron has a question.
Aaron.
I was looking these over. Don't we normally wait until Chief Wright has had a chance to go over these before we approve them?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So I'm inclined to wait then if we haven't checked that box yet.
You know, you, since it is a couple of weeks until this happens, maybe you could give approval pending his approval?
I'm game with that. I'll move that we approve both of these OLCC license applications pending Chief Wright's approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to give conditional permission pending Chief Wright's okay to Smokin' Steve's and the Rodeo Steakhouse OLCC permits. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to know what Smokin' Steve serves. I'll tell you that.
Well, he's got a barbecue place over by Kimmel's.
It's good.
It's good.
Okay, I did not know that.
Oh, yes. Smokin' Steve does an excellent job. Do you know Joanna from PUD? It's her husband who is doing that, has that food cart. And I think he sells out every day because he closes up as soon as he sells out. So it's, it's good food.
Thank you for that vital information.
Well, I figure, you know, it is an opportunity to give him a little bit of a commercial, you know.
Guy's got to have barbecue.
And we're all familiar with the quality of the Rodeo Steakhouse, so. And we're all familiar with the quality of the Rodeo Steakhouse. So. So we have a motion in a second. Any other concerns? Call for the question.
Question.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously by the council seated. Next, we have a police department vehicle purchase request. And you have all of the information from Terry in your packet.
He basically gave you the full packet of their outreach and the responses they received. And Tillmook Motor Company was the best price on the purchase, potential purchase of three new vehicles. He is proposing to finance this through TLC Credit Union. We, if, if you were to turn this down and we didn't move forward, we would still have the same budgetary impact anyway, based on our last financing program of, it would be roughly $40,000. What he has worked out in terms of an arrangement is that if you do approve this, that it would basically roll the three new vehicles into the old loan and stretch it out for a period of, of four years. And then it, so the budgetary impact would be exactly the same as what you already have in terms of debt service. So both the chief and myself are recommending to proceed with this. This gets them the new vehicles they need essentially for each officer to have their own vehicle, which is a very good way to go in terms of maintenance and care of the vehicles rather than rotating the vehicles between officers.
They last a lot longer.
Right.
And any questions, counsel?
Mayor?
Yes?
Paul, is there, and rolling this into TLC's existing, are there any other fees that go with that?
There is a built-in fee. I'm trying to see if I can remember, see it here. I've got the interest, loan amount, loan date. No, I'm not seeing any additional fees. It's really just the interest payment itself that is in this proposal.
Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion concerning this.
I move that we approve the purchase of the patrol vehicles.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, discussion. Counselors, do you have questions concerning this?
Question.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously by the council seated. Next, we have the Tillmook High School 2020 graduation road closure request.
Okay, you've got a memo from the chief in the packet. They're basically looking at May 29th at the county fairgrounds, having the graduation for the seniors. And they are requesting the closure of Third from Maroff Road to Wilson River Loop Road. That's just to keep the noise and the, allow for a little bit more functional handling of the, of the graduation group and their families. It's like a drive-in movie kind of event where everyone will be in their own vehicles. And they'll proceed through the graduation line in automobiles. So it's an interesting response to COVID emergency. And it is, I think, a very creative way to honor the, the students that are graduating. So anyway, it is a road closure, so it does require your approval.
Any questions before someone makes a motion concerning this?
If, it's Aaron, if memory serves, there's only a couple houses there where anyone lives at that would be affected.
Correct. And we're pretty good at accommodating if there's a residence or something. And now that's not an issue.
That's what I thought. So I'll move that we approve the street closure request for the Tillmook High School class of 2020.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to give approval for the graduation street closure. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Next, I said that we would be talking about resolution 1816.
Okay, and this resolution is a late addition to your packet, but it essentially is the financing agreement with TLC again. This is for the pavement patcher that we've already received. And it's just a formality that they want to have authorization for the finance director, Jamie, to execute all the loan closing documents. So again, staff recommendation is for approval. It's essentially an action that you've already authorized in terms of getting the pavement patcher.
Okay, if you have no questions, I will entertain a motion concerning resolution 1816.
Sorry.
That was synchronized motion making.
That's good.
Do we have a, you have, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved in second, second to approve resolution 1816 in the matter of accepting a loan from TLC to finance a pavement patcher and authorizing the signature of the loan documents.
Question.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Next, we'll go to the sewer rehabilitation station construction street closure request.
Okay, this is coming from our city engineer. And essentially it's related to our block grant, $2.5 million, most of which the work is on the east side of town. And it's a series of road closures without specific dates. She's getting authorization ahead of time. The contractor has yet to determine when he's going to be in which of these locations. So the recommendation is for approval without specific dates. Excuse me.
Put your arms up in the air. That's what I used to tell my kids. It'll stop it.
All right. So again, the recommendation was for approval.
Okay, you have all looked at this.
I do have one question.
Yes, Aaron.
The only concern I have is in the letter where it says the contractor will do his best to get residents to their houses if they are near the road close sign. And that confuses me because I'm pretty sure we need to make sure they can get to their home.
We do do that as much as possible unless there's a trench or some other type of.
Okay, that's what I was wondering if that's what it meant or.
Right.
But if she's gonna clarify that with them, I'm good.
I think it's the unknown because at this point in time, this is looking ahead into the future. And so hopefully all of those things will be taken care of by the time the construction starts.
I just hadn't seen that before, worded like that. So I wasn't sure if there was something in particular that was gonna be going on.
If there's a physical obstruction that they can't get there.
Okay.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on this.
Jorge?
Let's see here. Yeah, I'll move the, I'll move that we approve the pre-closeer request by the.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the sewer rehab traffic requesting control plan. Further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that also carries unanimously. Safe routes to school grant agreement. I was able to thank the lady from the Safe Routes to School who proposed this when I complained at Northwest Act about our students and people getting hit in the crosswalks at twilight and in the dark by Tillmook High School. And this is a rapid response grant that we qualified for in the school district and, and our Leon Welsh went to work on it immediately. And we are going to receive approximately $165,000 to, for the 12th Street, not 12th Street, Miller Avenue in, in the surrounding area for sidewalks and speed bumps and a four-way stop on 12th. So we made out quite well with this. Are there any questions concerning this grant? Okay, we're going to need a motion to approve the agreement with ODOT.
I move that we approve the agreement with ODOT for the Safe Routes to School grant.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, approving the agreement with ODOT. Is there, does anyone have any questions or any, is there any discussion? And because we did the sidewalks on 12th Street, that could be used as match, the local match for this whole grant process. And so we don't have to put any kind of cash in or require any cash from anyone to accomplish the construction of the sidewalks in these amendments to the school grounds.
Oh, is this an application we're approving? It's been awarded.
Yes. I mean, this is just a couple of, this is, this all happened within about two months. It was amazing.
Yeah, this is a contract.
Excellent.
Okay, we have a motion.
Question.
Oh, thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Next, we have the agreement for the short-term loan to Tillmook Urban Renewal. Paul, do you want to take over handing that?
This is, because Urban Renewal is a debt service-based agency, they actually have to incur debt to utilize their funds. And they have not this last year received any additional loans. And so in order to free up their money for use, they actually have to borrow for a short while. So they have requested the city to loan them $200,000 for five days. And then it will be promptly paid back. That, they have to exercise this within this fiscal year in order to free up that money. So this is a very short-term loan. There is no interest. It is simply a five-day in and out, or excuse me, out and in loan that will be promptly paid back by Tura. It's already been approved by Urban Renewal and just awaits your approval so that they can free up their funds for uses within the city.
Hey, any questions?
Are we gonna keep their car keys for those five days?
That's a good idea. We could.
The thought.
I'll move that we approve the short-term loan agreement with Tura.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the short-term loan agreement between the city of Tillmook and the Tillmook Urban Renewal Agency. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously by the council. Next, we have the ratification of the emergency declaration augmentation and amendment.
Okay, this is another ratification process. Since your last meeting, I did issue an additional declaration on May 6th. Basically, it loosened up some of our regulations in parks, boat launches and hotel lodging. So this is now your first chance to look at it, ratify it. If you wish to modify it, that's possible too. Or change it in any way. So it's here before you. I think as part of this discussion, we should also talk about what we would like to do with a couple other things too. It, it doesn't necessarily change your motion on this declaration, but we are looking at probably having to extend our emergency ordinance before your next council meeting. So I was going to be extending it another 30 days through June. I think it's in our best interest to do that. We may be some additional loosening up depending on how things flow out of the state as we watch that. We are looking at, and I think you guys are gonna talk about this in his report, the possibility of opening up the city hall here on June 1st. So he's gonna talk a little bit about that. We should also look at whether we want to hold our moratorium on committee meetings through June as well. So there's a couple topics for you to consider. And, but the base, base discussion here is the declaration that I've already done and whether you wish to ratify that.
And we have gone into phase one in the county. But face, phase one will be at least 21 days long. And then we will be, we will have to, the county will apply for phase two. And so, you know, there's gonna be a lot that depends on, on that also. So I think that Paul's moving that ahead to a future date, I think is a really good idea. And I think also beginning to talk about opening up city hall is also a good idea.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I do believe it's time for government to get back to work and I'm in favor of the committees starting to again.
I would, I would suggest that we begin committee meetings after June 1st. Let's get through May and this whole season. And then in June, we talk about it. We see where we're at. And then we go forward from there. And I, I, how do you feel about that, counselors? Would that be your?
That works for me.
Aaron?
Yeah, I'm okay. I'm also okay with doing any of the committee meetings by Zoom if we wanted, if we needed to. I'm good with that.
Doug, what are you, how, what is your feeling on resuming committee meetings in June?
I agree. I think we need to get moving forward on it. We've been stagnant for a while. And I, I think we, can we move back in to have our meetings yet? I hate this Zoom.
You should do it six or seven hours a day some days and see how you really like it.
Well, you're the brain trust that decides what the state representatives.
Brian, what is your opinion?
You heard my opinion. I'm ready to open anytime.
Okay, then let's start, let's start talking about our, having our committee meetings in June. Get through this month and then we'll work. on our committee meetings. I will take that as a consensus. I see heads bobbing. Yeah, I think we can get it done. Okay, but then we go back to our emergency declaration. I'm looking for a motion concerning that or any other discussion or questions.
Well, it's something we already basically approved.
Yes.
Okay, well, I move that we approve a second time the addendum to the emergency declaration.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the emergency declaration augmentation and amendment. Is there any discussion?
Question.
The question is called for all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. And then when we get to Ukiah's report, we will talk about the ideas for opening up city hall and getting moving on that. Okay, you've got Jamie's report.
Mayor, Aaron has something.
Oh, excuse me, Aaron. I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
I forgot you couldn't see me. Did Paul, this question, Paul, did you say that we needed to make a decision tonight on extending this or was it the next meeting?
I'll do that before the end of the month, and then you can ratify it at your next meeting.
Got you. Thanks.
Okay, on to Jamie's financial report. Are there any questions that anyone has on her report?
Mayor.
Yes.
What, did we have some incomplete numbers when it came to like the marijuana tax coming in? It seemed like that was not right.
There were, there were a lot of things on that particular form that to me didn't seem right. Yes, I understand transit lodging tax and things like that, but I.
She's missing a section here. Last one for marijuana was from September, so.
Yeah, it's like two, two sections behind it.
Right. I think somehow it got cut off on her print job here.
And then when you look at these, yeah, the state side, it's got it cut off in June of 2019.
Right.
No.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have her forward you the full spreadsheet tomorrow.
That would be a really good idea because that'll give us a better idea of just exactly how far behind we are on some of these things.
If I'm guessing right, that number should be going up in the next in the next look.
Yeah.
It should be, yes.
Unfortunately going up.
Great. Okay, you have Ukiah's report. Ukiah?
Good evening, Mayor, and to the council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and present the, my first ever office and city reporter report. This is, this is my, this is my baby. So don't be mean to me. I'm just kidding. So so in your report in front of you, there are four, there are four particularities that I addressed. And the first is the approach to reopening the city hall offices. I was able to have a good conversation with Paul today. We walked around the facility to see what it would look like to have customers coming back into the building again, as well as to be using the council chambers again for the purpose of having meetings, committee meetings and council meetings, that sort of thing. We talked about the logistics of physical distancing. We talked about separating the hallway into two, one for a holding line. That would be against the north wall in the main hallway facing the utility window. And then on the south side of the hallway, we would split that, and that would be for pass-through traffic. So people who needed to go out the ADA ramp door or for whatever, whatever purpose they needed to go back and forth. Within, within the, the number one there, that item, we just, I thought of four different ways that we could approach it. Some banks, as it says, have been allowing interest through appointment only. It is the consensus, though it seems to be among the staff here that we do open fully to the public. And so that's going to be the approach that we take. Also, the logistics of getting PPE, I do know that the Oregon Health Authority is reimbursing any PPE purchases through a certain period of time in order to help defray any costs that the city may incur as a result of the extra purchases we're having to make because of this public health emergency. So our accounts payable clerk Kate Laxson, she does have the, she does have the knowledge of the coding in order to be able to receive the money we need back for the expenses we may take for that. I'm excited to get the city hall open again. June 1st can't come fast enough. I've been working under the auspices of the emergency declaration since I came to the city. And even though the city hall, we may only have five to six customers maximum in the lobby at any point in time, and that's on a busy day. It will be nice to have the doors open to the public and be able to be transparent. So I'm looking forward to that. But it is also important to me that we get feedback from the council assembled here. So I'm, I'm going to open questions for questions or comments or suggestions right now for this particular item on my report so that I can get a better idea of where you're, where you're at.
Counsel?
I think if you use the protective equipment for, for the employees, then your plan of opening up fully when the right date gets here works for me.
Yeah, thank you, John. I appreciate that. We have looked into that. We have not been using PPE here without being open to the public. We are under the guidelines of the 10-person maximum that was established prior to Friday, the 15th, when the guidelines were adjusted. In discussion with the staff, we don't necessarily feel the need to use masks. We are able to physical distance in a manner that seems to be appropriate for the six-foot guidelines. I do, however, understand there is a concern among the, some of the general public that the people they interact with on a customer service basis be protected. I can guarantee you that the glass that we have, the, through which we interact with the customers to receive their utility bills is more than sufficient. We also have a window up by the, by the door of the old post office that we, we'll be doing business for Tura through. We'll be using a plexiglass screen there that we already have here. We're just going to be moving it from one window to the next so that any interactions there can occur. We also will have masks available if customers requested, or if we do need to interact with customers on a person-to-person basis. I know that restaurants and businesses and that sort of thing are mandated under Oregon state law. And if the guidelines do change and government offices are mandated to do so, we will definitely do that. And if the consensus of the staff and the council is that we should move forward as such, we will do that. But at this point in time, the staff doesn't feel it's necessary, but that's just where we're coming from.
I do have one question for the council. On June 1st is your next meeting. We could also open up the chamber for you to physically meet in. If we do that, when Ukiah and I looked at it today, we would have enough room in there for the council to physically distance. But we'd have to have any audience stand on the other side of a barrier in the lobby. We can't get audience and council in there and keep proper distancing.
True.
Sounds like a good idea.
Let us in. Okay.
June 1st meeting will be here in the council chamber. Okay, now, as to Ukiah's. Do we look forward to opening then the city hall on June 1st also?
Yes, Mayor, that is, that's the goal. That's the conversation that we had today. That's what all the staff are aware of at this time as moving forward into. And I think, I think I can say that we're very happy to be doing so.
Okay, additionally, on your report, if we're finished with that, was the introduction of the consent agenda rather than.
Sorry, it's, I wasn't looking at your face. I didn't see. I apologize. So there are three more items on the report. The first is the introduction of the consent calendar. So if you have an idea of what a consent calendar or consent agenda is, you already know. If you don't, Jorge, Jorge sent me a good email earlier, and I appreciate the positive feedback from you regarding that. The consent calendar allows you to wrap up items that will occur on a regular basis on the agenda or items that are occurring on an irregular basis. So like tonight, you all approved the sewer construction traffic closure request. You approved the parade traffic request. You approved the meeting minutes. You approved, you're going to approve the bills here in just a moment or two. And so what happens in a consent calendar is those items are placed on an itemized list for consideration by the council. And they can be pulled. If the council decides they do want to debate issues. Was that a question? Sorry, I heard it. Okay, then, okay. So if the council decides they want to debate an item, they can pull it. They do have to notify just right before the meeting. There's no timeframe on that. So if they decide at like 6:55, they want to discuss paying the bills, they're free to do so, and we'll just add it to the agenda where it would previously have been. But this allows for the streamlining of the agenda, makes things take a little less time. And it allows for more substantive discussion on the more pertinent clues that you have at hand, and we can go home sooner.
Question. First of all, I'm going to say that part of the reason that we do what we do and, and address individual items is because we are also educating the public on what we are doing so that the public doesn't feel that everything we do is just a rubber stamp. Secondly, when it comes to our, paying our bills, there has to be an individual vote of the council. And so that needs to be taken into consideration also because of the amount of money it is. There was one other reason why we have to do that, but those, those are two considerations that I have. I agree that consent agenda is a good way to proceed, and it does shorten minutes, meetings. But I, I think we need to also remember that we need to continue to keep the public apprised of everything that we're doing. So if the rest of the council would like to weigh in on this, I think I pushed my way in there.
I just want to say that I was part of a board one time where the consent agenda was set by the ranking official at the table. And it was misused from what we're hearing that it's for because it was to basically stifle discussion and just get important things. The person wanted done, done. And so I'm a little wary of them. But if it works the way that Ukiah is just, you know, talking about, that probably be okay with me.
Go ahead, Jorge. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I like the idea. I think it's a, you know, it's a good tool. I think, you know, like Ukiah said, any one of the councilors at any time can say that they want to debate any of the topics. So, you know, if you have concerns that something's going to get stifled, or you're not going to be able to talk about something, all that takes is one person speaking up and saying, hey, I want to discuss this. So, you know, it's just a tool to be able to use to, you know, put the more mundane things together and just pass them out one time. But, you know, anything that needs discussion, you could just pull that out.
Thank you for that clarification.
Doug?
Well, for all the years I've, I've been involved, I like the consent agenda process because I think 99.9% of the time we knew before we even asked for whether we were going to approve it or not. We knew that we were going to approve it. I cannot think of one instance where it became contentious or that we felt that we had to retract and make a big deal out of it. So I think it works well. I think it saves us time. And most of the time, we're, we're pretty much on the same page. But we all, we do have the option. And John brings up a valid point that proves to be not a good idea. All it takes is one council to say, I don't agree. I, I would like to do a different process on this. I, I think it's a good process and it helps move the meetings along.
Aaron?
I have to say that I like the idea, but I also like the way that we do it now for many reasons. Number one, I agree with the mayor that everything is talked about and gone through, and it's a lot more transparent. And it's not like we have three, four-hour meetings. So, I mean, if we were having three-hour meetings every time, I would be very in favor of doing it. But it's, it seems like our meetings go pretty smooth, and I personally like the interaction and discussing it with everyone. That's my opinion.
Brian, do you want to weigh in?
Um, I think that we could package some of the more mundane things like the minutes and some simple things into there. But any, any new business I would like to keep out and discuss, as you and Aaron have stated. I think there's validity to having that open discussion. And, you know, I, I don't ever want to give the impression that we are rubber stamping, but that we are conscious of what we're doing on behalf of our constituents.
It's amazing how many people watch what we do and have comments on, you know, the learning process that they didn't have any idea of that, what all goes on to make some of these decisions. And so that's, I, I can see the mundane thing, but the business part of it, I think, needs to be kept out of the consent agenda. Okay.
We should have it for a trial period.
That would be a good idea.
Two or three meetings and just see how it feels again to everybody.
And then at the end of that time, we can evaluate it and decide if we're going to go on. Is that, what do you think, council? Do we have a consensus on that?
See, there you go, consensus. I agree. Good idea.
John?
Yes, I said it. Was I not nodding enough?
You didn't have enough.
Okay.
Ukiah, you want to go on with the rest of your report?
Yeah, there's not much more contained herein, but I do appreciate the opportunity to have this discourse about the consent agenda, and I appreciate the feedback. I do know that it will, the feedback from the council will help to craft a more complete idea of how we move forward with this particular issue. Number three and number four, pretty self-explanatory. At number three, you all adopted resolution number 1813. It restructured the rate schedule, which actually did affect 45 of our customers, business customers and residential customers. So we had to do some changing around of the rates that they were paying. So once, as it says in the report, once we have completed this billing cycle and receive payments, we'll be better, we'll be better off. We'll understand more about the direct impact of that, and I can report that back to sometime in June, June 1st, when hopefully some of you will be visiting us here at city hall council chambers. And then number four, we did hire Darcy Werner. She, she's great. She's got lots of energy. She's really excited to learn. She worked, she worked for two different banks here in, here in Tillamook for Umpqua Bank and for US Bank for four years, and she worked for four years with the Adventist Health System in Tillamook in patient billing. She knows a lot about insurance, a lot about how to navigate that sort of system, and so she's got a really good mind for the very important. For the very important um, and small details that we deal with here on day-to-day basis in the utility department. When you get the chance to come visit her, if you don't already know her, come, uh, come say hi. Um, and you should just come say hi in general because uh, we miss our councilors.
Does that conclude your report?
And this concludes my report. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Okay, my report is uh, short. You know, this is the anniversary of the eruption of Mount St. Helens. Um, it's a big day. Uh, they've gotten a lot of attention. I have been going to a lot of meetings. I've gone to uh, coal pack and the county meetings and the uh, emergency management meetings. I also attended the global day of prayer. And that uh, was, not only did they have the, the tour through town, but they also livestreamed from the Christian church. I had a bunch of other things that I was going to say tonight, but I went off and left my notebook at home, and so you're free. However, I am going to say uh, just to the general public, if you're watching and to everyone, make sure that you vote. Tomorrow is an important day. Remember, this was the year that Oregon put postage on your um, ballots. But it's too late to do that, so make sure you find one of these little boxes around town. Which they have made very accessible here at city hall, at county courthouse, at the library. Uh, to uh, make sure you vote. Okay, council concerns. Um, Council Reynolds?
Um, I just a couple of things. Um, I would like to propose that perhaps in the reports that we get from. Um, some of the, the heads of departments in the city, that we get more detailed reports from them. You know, we hear about uh, some people left and, you know, I, I don't want to hear things like money coming in, money going out. I'd like to have a little more detail as to what's going on. And uh, just feel that some of those reports are a little shy on information.
Thank you. Uh, Council Sandusky?
I'm glad we're buying that paving thing because our roads are falling apart. Not that that's news. But I'm happy about that.
Me too. Counselor Henson? Counselor Burris?
I will agree with uh, Reynolds and Sandusky on both of those. Uh, I think a little more detail would be good, and we do have many places that uh, need some very deep holes fixed. So it is going to be nice to see that machine running.
Certainly is. Uh, Counsel Rios?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay, then uh.
Then I move we pay the bill.
I second that motion.
Been moved and seconded that we give authorization to pay the bills. Paul, will you take the vote of the council, please?
Okay, Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Sandusky?
Aye.
Counselor Hanson? Counselor Burris?
Aye.
And Counsel Rios?
Aye.
Okay, well, thanks all of you for being here. Um, appreciate it, and we'll see you all in this room on June first. And Paul, you were going to add?
Uh, I just wanted to add one thing. I didn't have a report tonight, but I am um, uh, going to send out a uh, request for proposals for planning services. Just an FYI for you. Um, I have to do it now before your next meeting so that you, we can get something back. So when the county's contract expires at the end of June, hopefully we'll have somebody in place to step into that. So I just, it's an FYI, um, and you'll be seeing that coming back to you at your second meeting in June.
Okay.
Don't we have a budget committee meeting coming up?
What?
Don't we have a budget committee meeting coming up in a week or so?
I was just going to say, I'll see you all at the budget committee meeting on the twenty-first.
Thank you.
Real close.
This week.
This week. Uh, remember that the urban renewal budget is at five o'clock. Uh, and then the city of Tillamook budget is at six o'clock. Okay, and both of those are Zoom conference. And I, and they are separate, so you're going to have to log into one and have that meeting and then log into the next for the um, city budget. Okay? Got it?
Got it.
Add one more item.
Doug?
I, I, I had it written down, but I forgot. I would like to give Ukiah a special thanks for. Starting off on a brand-new job with a very difficult situation. Having to deal with uh, a pandemic and trying to put our meetings together. And having done it pretty much flawlessly, and I really appreciate the help that he's given me. Uh, and his staff and Paul and Suzanne. Uh, I know it's created a real hardship for you guys, so I really appreciate you guys. That is in to keep the city running uh, smoothly and uh, flawlessly. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay. Going once, going twice? The meeting's adjourned.